Start, I'm gonna run through those ground rules again and also uh take a roll call. And I will jump into business. Alright, it's seven o'clock, uh I'm gonna call the meeting to order if everybody's ready. So again. Oh, I got an email, sorry. Um, I'm just gonna run down through a quick ground rule run, uh so please silence your your cell phones. Try to minimize background noise. Uh whenever you want to make a comment, please identify yourself. Uh it's, you know, helps further minutes. Um when not speaking, please use a mute option on the screen to eliminate background noise. If you're, if you don't do that and it's noisy, Greg can mute you. If Greg does mute you, you have to unmute yourself. Um let anyone who's speaking finish before making comments, and if there's any audience members, please wait till the presentations are over to make comments and we will have uh a public comment section at the end of the meeting. So with that, I'm gonna do a quick roll call, go through the planning commission members first. Uh Alex, are you here? Alright, Tim.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
John.
Present.
Uh Steve Valley are here.
Yeah.
Alright, so who do we have uh for the Schlosser?
Andy Schlosser.
You're the only one representing?
Yes, just me.
Okay, and who do we have for Fresco?
Scott Pasturski with Keystone.
And.
Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
And Jeff Hammond with Fresco.
Okay, anybody else wanna identify themselves for the meeting? Alright. Aaron.
David, David calling, David, David Collingwood is here.
Hi David.
Hi David.
Uh Anthony Bogner.
Hi Tony, thanks for joining. Jim Miller, I see you join.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Alright, with that, uh we're gonna get started here. So first item agenda is approval of the minutes from the April fourteenth meeting. Everyone have a chance to look them over, any corrections, deletions, whatnot?
I have none.
This is Tim, I have none.
John, I have none.
Alright, here and none, uh look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make such.
Who actually made the motion?
Andy.
Okay, Andy made the motion, I got a second?
John will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Okay, uh so Andy Schlosser, Schlosser, uh you have the floor.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time ladies and gentlemen. Um again, my name Andy Schlosser, I'm with Schloss and Co. Consulting Engineers. Uh on this particular project, I am also one of the owners. Um well, the owner, the owner is um 3G Holdings LLC, which is um uh I am, I am the president of that uh company slash partnership and my siblings uh are also owners of it and um this is what uh would be my family farm. Uh this, this, this uh is basically three, three existing lots that make up a little over thirty acres. It's on the uh northeast side of County Line Road, a couple thousand feet south of uh five sixty-three or Ridge Road. Um there is an existing driveway that comes out to County Line Road and it wraps back about a thousand feet to the existing house. Um it's a, it, it looks like uh similar to uh, I, I believe it looks similar to the original farmhouse that was there when my father bought the property in the seventies, although that house had deteriorated pretty badly and, and they ended up rebuilding it in the uh, in the mid eighties. Um so they had lived there from, I think eighty-six until just two years ago when they moved to Peter Becker. So um my siblings and I have bought the property um and we intended to develop it um in a fashion that was, I would say similar to what my father had envisioned many years ago when he thought that he might uh subdivide it, but um there, there ended up being a lot more wetlands and uh as a result, a lot of restrictions on the property than, than what we had anticipated. What we're looking at here gentlemen is a um, is a cul-de-sac that's about nine, a little over nine hundred feet long. Um it serves uh the existing house and also seven new homes. Um there is a detention basin down, if you're looking at the plan, uh the overall plan, down in the right-hand corner, you can see kind of a black blob. Uh that's, that's an underground structure. That's part of an overall detention basin system. Uh so that's where the detention basin goes. Uh it's, it's uh basically um, you know, a simple eight-lot subdivision, um keeping the existing farmhouse where it is, uh fitting the, fitting the new cul-de-sac in around it. The existing house, the front of the house is actually on the north side, so the back looks out over the valley, o- over County Line Road. And so when I designed this, uh the intention was to get the cul-de-sac all the way to the high side of the house so that the front yard would actually be somewhat in the front of the, of the house. It's a little bit of a difficult situation given that the house faces down the hill. But um that, the objective was not only to have the, the, the cul-de-sac be the front yard for the house, but then also um it would put public water, I would, I would be able to put public water all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac and that, the fire hydrant that I put at the end will be able to encompass the existing barn. And um I kind of felt that that was important because uh some of you may know, there was a field fire a couple of years ago and uh we had to have fire trucks running up the driveway. Um and it was just not a good situation to have a bunch of firework, fire trucks up in there with no public water and um and really being pretty far from the road. So um this cul-de-sac solves that problem as well. So um if you don't have any real questions about the, the plan before I get into the review letter, I guess I should just throw it out there to see if anybody has any, any thoughts or comments about the plan that's in front of us. We have a review letter from Steve um that I'd like to take a quick run through, but I thought I'd throw it out to see if you guys have any questions before we roll through that.
Uh this is Chris, I have no questions, I'll, I'll wait to see what shakes out of the review letter.
Uh one thing I didn't mention is um although this is public water, there, the um septic systems will be on site, there'll, there'll be micromounds. Um you can, if you can get a good look at that picture, you can see there are large rectangles uh near the houses, those would be the locations of the proposed septic systems.
And they, uh Andy, this is Chris. Um so, so what I'm saying is you have side by side is the septic and reserve, the primary and reserve?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is Alex, could we zoom in on the lot to the left side of the cul-de-sac?
This is a PowerPoint presentation, we can't zoom in or zoom out.
Okay.
This is like the wall.
My question is, it's, it seems like we might be getting very close to the property line with, I'm, what I'm guessing is the reserve there? Do we have ten feet from the property line there?
Uh yeah, we have at least ten feet for, for all of them.
Thanks.
Any, any other questions for Andy before he starts going through the review?
This is Tim, I have none.
This is Andy, none.
None for John.
Okay, um and I'm gonna call you Andrew if that's alright, uh Andy Schlosser.
Yeah, that's fine.
We have an Andy on the planning commission.
Right, I saw that.
Andrew, just to avoid confusion. So go ahead, if you wanna, if you wanna start down the review letter.
Okay, so um let's pop down in the first, on the first page, one B. Uh Steve's up, Steve brings up the fact that there are a lot of restrictions um on, on a number of these lots. They're, they're basically set off of the wetlands and steep slopes associated with the, the, the ditches or creek or whatever you wanna call these things that, these are kind of headwaters. Um so he's, he's suggesting that the township may want to see us uh add some deed restrictions in, in the form of an easement over top of these items. Um I don't have a strong opinion either way on these things, so um I, I guess I'm, I'm flexible with that. As far as that's concerned, I, I don't know how much benefit that will bring to the township, but um if that's something that you guys really want, then we'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, um before we get too prone up, what, what's your response to uh one A?
Uh yeah, we did, we had Penn's Trail come out and do a wetland study and uh we'll go ahead and get the JD for that and submit the report along with the JD and the, the uh mappings prepared by Penn's Trail to Steve for review. Uh I didn't really have an issue of it with that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Um Steve, you wanna chime in on B here?
Hang on a second, before we get to B, Steve, we don't have any problem if it's a, what the Corps now calls a preliminary JD?
Uh no, we actually wrote that into the ordinance that we can, that we'll accept a preliminary JD.
Gotcha. Andrew, I'm just thinking that might be a little quicker for you guys and going through the owner's process of a full-blown JD.
Okay, I, I'm not familiar with the, with that preliminary JD, so I'll, I'll talk to Penn's Trail about that.
Yeah, Paul should know about that.
Yeah.
And, and then uh Chris, on the, the second item, we, we did something similar, if you remember the Ridge Valley Road um select property subdivision, that was full of woodlands and wetlands. And we established a declaration of covenants on that property that, that protected the, those natural reef resources.
Right.
It, it gives us a little bit more leeway down the road. Those lots in particular, we had some issues when they went to build the houses on them, the owners wanted to move things around and add to them, which they really couldn't because the building envelope was so restricted. And those easements helped us control that a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we can compare these lots to the lots that's, that's select, but I don't remember the, the name of that subdivision, but I do remember that coming through our, through our office. It was a little, little surprising.
Yeah, that, this is nothing like that, but there's still areas that are supposed to be a hundred percent protected for perpetuity, so.
Right.
So to make things a lot simpler down the road, if these are, are delineated on the, on the deed, or restricted on the deed, these areas?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I, if, I mean, I would, I would be in favor of having that done if you guys aren't opposed to doing it.
Nope, not if it makes you guys happy.
Apparently it will. Thank you.
You bet. Um okay, so we need to, we move on to the second page, um item number two, there's a number of items we really need to talk about on this one, including uh waiver requests. Um and it gears around the, the um, the nature of the road itself, the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac is over the eight hundred foot maximum length by about a hundred and twenty feet. And I had originally designed this in with an island down at the lower portion of, you know, where, where it intersects with County Line Road. And in discussing with, this with Steve yesterday, he pointed out the problem that the township would have to maintain that because it's gonna be a public street. So um I think, I think with my next design, it would probably be best, unless you guys actually want this boulevard effect, it would be best if I removed that. Um my, my thinking was that that would, that would provide uh a separation at, near the intersection in case there was an accident out there. Sometimes it's beneficial to have a separated lane. I don't know how true that is because I've never actually dealt with an accident like this uh at an intersection with a boulevard, if it actually helps. So I think from a maintenance standpoint, um I'm, I'm leaning towards Steve's thoughts of not having the township have to take care of it, an island. So I guess I'll throw that out to you guys right away. The, the first comment, if you wanna go through these one by one, uh two A is about the right-of-way width and I'm going to revise that to the fifty-two feet that uh, that the ordinance calls for. The second one is regarding the length of the cul-de-sac. Um the third one has, has to do with addressing the curbed island. Um so I guess, I just wanna throw it out to you guys to find out what your thoughts are um as far as that, the length and the, the curbed island effect, um see if you actually would want that. You know, it's hard, I can't see your faces, so I can't see you react to any of the discussion that I'm having.
Steve, this is Alex, do you think that if that curbed island was just concrete and there was really nothing to maintain there, that there would be a benefit to it?
Uh it would be more desirable if it's just a manageable curb island, if the township had to maintain it, but it's a snow plowing issue. And actually truck turning movements is easier without the island there.
And if it's just concrete. Sorry, Steve.
The only island we have in the township is at, at the entrance to um I can't think of the name now, but the age, age-restricted uh development off of Detwiler Road, and that's a private road, so we don't maintain it.
Right. Is there any benefit to having that there, traffic-wise?
I, I don't, I don't think for the purpose that Andy was hoping for. Um you know what our experience with fire companies and stuff have been, when, when they arrive, they close everything, doesn't matter how many ways we try to make it better to get access around them. You know, if something happens on this street, they're gonna close the whole street because they'll take up everything. So I don't think you'll get all that benefit from it.
I think from an aesthetic standpoint, I would, if it's gonna just be concrete, I'd rather just remove it because I don't think they're very attractive. Those concrete islands makes, it makes it feel like you're in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I can see the, see the relevance of the aesthetics there, having that island, but it would have to be aesthetically pleasing uh if you weren't, if you weren't gonna have that. You know, if you're, if you're doing it for aesthetics, putting concrete there would not make sense. If, if there's no actual traffic benefit to it, then I, I would say, you know, if you don't wanna, don't want concrete, don't do it.
Okay.
Agreed, Chris.
This is Tim, I agree with that as well.
This is Andy Encha, I, I would agree with that also.
Alright. So what, which letter was that?
That was letter C.
That's letter C, okay, so you're gonna eliminate the island at the entrance.
Yes.
Okay.
If we can back up to B, um how are you guys feeling about the fact that this cul-de-sac length is, is a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet, I don't know exactly, more than, than what is uh permitted? I- is that something that you guys are willing to recommend a waiver for?
Um, this is Chris. Uh I know the last time we had someone looking for additional length, it was substantially more than what you're asking for. Um the first place we went was to the Fire Marshal, we'll get their input on it. Um and they, they rejected the idea, but it was much longer than what you're looking for. Um it, it's been so long since we've done a cul-de-sac, I don't, I don't have any recollection of uh anything that we've waived, any length, length uh increase that we've waived in the past. Uh Steve, I guess I would defer to you again, get your thoughts on that.
Well, you, I think you're correct, we've done very few cul-de-sacs um of any length. Uh, you know, we had said, we, we had had a lot of back and forth conversation when we redid the ordinance about what the right length was and what the number of lots were. You know, we, and that's somewhere we came with that balance of eight hundred feet and, and twelve lot. So this is a little bit longer, but it has less lots on it, which is a plus. Um I mean, otherwise, I, I don't, I don't have any particular objection to this length and this, this layout. I do think the fire company is uh we, you know, they have to reach out to them anyway, but we should get comment from them on the uh, on the road.
Andrew, I'm just looking to see if there was a way to shorten that up. And it looks like the, the limitation becomes how far you can move lot five towards lot four to give lot six more access? And I, from what I'm seeing, it looks like the wetland buffer is what's causing your problem there?
Yes. Yes, if we can just cut out those wetlands there, I could do this a lot differently.
Start draining.
I don't think.
Should've had your dad work on that years ago.
I don't think, I, I told my, well, so we got this, we had, ironically enough, we had the wetlands done right after it rained for like eighteen months straight. I don't know if you remember that, but we went like a year and a half where it rained like every two or three days. And I was shocked at how far out those wetlands went. But you know, it is, delineation is a delineation, it is what it is.
Yeah. Um.
I was just gonna say, before you get the uh preliminary JD, you might wanna revisit that.
Yeah, I don't think Maureen's gonna move because I asked her upfront, I said, are you serious? It's out in the middle of the field. She said it is what it is. So I don't think she's gonna move.
This is uh, this is Tim, is there any snow storage area uh provided at the end of the cul-de-sac? Is there, has that been?
I left room for it, but I did not label it as such. And um I think that's one of the comments here in Steve's letter that, that we will be, you know, labeling up a, a specific area for snow storage.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Um this is Chris, getting back to the, the length, I, I don't think I would have a problem with, Steve, Steve's correct, when we redid the ordinance, it was, it was a lot of give and take, I said what number would actually, would be the, the right number. Um what do you, you adding a little over a hundred feet to this? Is that what I saw?
Yes.
Um I don't think I'd have a problem with that, you know, provided that the, the uh fire guys don't have an issue with it, Fire Marshal.
Okay, I will check with the Fire Marshal then to make sure that it's not a problem. Is there any input from the other members?
This is Tim, uh yeah, I, I don't have a problem with.
Chris, it's Alex, nor do I.
Andy Encha, I don't have any further input.
Do you have an option of moving the cul-de-sac closer to County Line Road and it's just making the driveways longer to each of the properties?
Um possibly, I'd have to check, I think the, the restriction comes in the, the frontage of the lots. Um but I might be, I, I will have to check into that.
I, I would think though, any change will end up being nominal in, in the length, you know, if you cut fifty feet up the road, does that really make a whole lot of difference?
Um true.
And, and just as a reminder for the other planning commission members, that, that other project with the long cul-de-sac street will be back next month. Uh so we'll be tackling this question again next month.
John, to address your issue, I think that the problem has become the uh existing outbuilding on the, the main lot and in the wetlands on the other lot. So I don't know that there's much they can do to shorten that.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be able to even shorten it fifteen feet. Uh it won't be, there won't be a lot of room to move.
Alright, and our ordinance doesn't really allow for, for flag lots off of a cul-de-sac where, you know, any development that has new streets in it. So to shorten it up and turn the back lots into flag lots is not an option either.
Okay. Steve, this is Chris, what's the uh maximum uh amount of lots allowed on a cul-de-sac?
Look, I believe it's twelve.
Well, okay. Alright, yeah, I mean, we're, we're under by a quarter.
Yeah, and I think the length was sort of based off of what the lot width is, for twelve lots, it got us back to about eight hundred feet.
Okay, alright, well, there's no further issue on that, let's uh, let's say, say that the planning commission will support it as long as the Fire Marshal does.
Okay, thank you gentlemen.
Alright, you wanna go to D?
D, what was D, although. Okay, so uh D addresses um the requirement for uh sidewalk. And um I guess I should say that, that the, the cross-section of the cul-de-sac includes curbing, but uh I'm not showing sidewalk at this point because uh there wasn't really any other sidewalk in the area. I did include it in my stormwater management calculations so that in the event that you were to come back and put sidewalk in, it wouldn't be a problem as far as the detention basin is concerned. Um so I, I think, you know, uh it, it's my understanding through Steve that um I would have to pay a fee in lieu of the sidewalk, so I guess it would, you know, fall to you guys um you know, as to the desirability of having sidewalk there.
The one thing I, this is Steve, one thing I always like to bring up, especially on a cul-de-sac street, is school buses won't go back there. So generally, the kids have to walk out to the corner. And it's one, one issue for sidewalk.
This is Tim, this is, excuse me, similar to the Kratts uh development in the sense of that they're proposed on the, like with a deed restriction, I believe, that they're going to be their future sidewalk, is that what I was reading?
Well.
Not a deed restriction, but it's meant.
A little bit different here, that, that's on the, that front's on the Pendott Road. And we were reserving the right to install that sidewalk later. Uh in this case, the sidewalk would be within the township right-of-way, so we would have every right to put sidewalk on this road without any other easements.
Okay.
So I don't know that we'd need that restriction the way we did it on Kratts, but um I mean, it could certainly be a note on the plan if you don't want it now, but wanna advise people that there may be sidewalk later.
What I, what's the, like the most recent cul-de-sac that we, that we've done and did we have sidewalks in it?
I live on a cul-de-sac with sidewalks.
I, I was gonna say, in the development area, all those streets have sidewalks on them.
Right.
Um outside the development area, we have Anna Lane, but that's mostly commercial. And we really haven't built any streets in a long time in the township, I believe.
Ingram Way is right down the street, I don't think that has any sidewalks.
Yeah, well, they weren't.
Yeah.
That really, that wasn't.
This is Andy Encha, I'm in favor of sidewalks.
I uh, I'm leaning that way myself, this is Chris, um I think, I think, you know, the, the the school bus issue is, is a big one. Um nobody wants to send their kids down the street if they can't send them down sidewalks for sure.
Right. Would, would.
And you, you could.
Go ahead, Steve.
I, I'm sorry, I was, I was just gonna say, you know, for this case, since most of the frontage on the, on the, say, the north side of the road is all lot, the existing lot eight, you know, you probably could get away with just doing sidewalk on one side from the cul-de-sac, you know, from the last driveway back in the cul-de-sac down the southern side to the, out to County Line Road.
I was just gonna suggest the same thing, and then, and then we have uh people, for, for lot one, they would have to cross the street to use the sidewalk.
Is there something?
Correct.
You know, put that in the plan and, and have future sidewalk, some type of writing on the plan for future sidewalk on lot uh one and eight? Because that might be, that might be a, a, a sales killer or um an advantage to have it on both sides as, from a sales standpoint.
Steve, would there be any advantage to showing like a striped area for like a pedestrian crosswalk painted on the road?
Uh or a mid-block crossing like that? We could. Uh you, you could stripe it and put two signs up, we, we did that um right off of Climate Road, I forget the name of that little uh John Garris cul-de-sac there, next to Providence. That has a little painted crosswalk in back the, in the middle of the road.
And this isn't a situat, it's not like, like uh road improvements where if they don't put the sidewalks in, they get, they have to pay a fee in lieu of. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
It is?
It is, no.
And it's a requirement, so it's a contribution without.
Chris, it always is.
What's that? Yeah, no matter what.
That's what I said, yeah.
Instead of a concrete sidewalk, could you put in like a paved walking? Instead of a concrete sidewalk, could you put in like a paved walking slash bike path? Down the County Line Road?
Uh, you're you're asking me if it can be done? It can be done, absolutely. I don't, that wouldn't meet the requirements of your code, though. Generally, generally bikers are required to ride in the street. Um, and people walk on the sidewalk off the off the street, so um, I think I I I'm willing to go with whatever you guys would like to see out there, quite frankly. Um. I don't see a lot of, I don't see a lot of, oh, I shouldn't say that. This, generally when you're doing a shared uh, bike path type of thing, it goes somewhere. Um, in this case, you're really not gonna have that.
And and this is Steve. I I think, you know, if with a with a partial waiver, you could allow a blacktop path instead of a sidewalk, but if you did it narrow like the sidewalk, it's actually harder to pave it and it's um, sometimes long term, the a blacktop path like that is a little bit of a maintenance nightmare when you get down the road. Uh, more so than concrete is.
It's clearly not going to last as long as concrete is.
Correct. Well.
This is Tim. I I would be comfortable with the one side. I mean, as long as you have uh, access on on one side of the road, I think that would be sufficient. But with like you said, Chris, you know, having it on the print that, you know, potentially there would be sidewalk on the other side.
Right. I'd agree with that. This is Alex.
Yeah, so I don't know how you'd write that in on the plan.
So I'll show, I'll show the sidewalk to be built uh, on the one side and I'll have it wrap around the cul-de-sac bulb. And then I'll put a note on the plan that says that the uh, remainder of the sidewalk on along the cul-de-sac would be installed at uh, should the township request it in the future. And it'll it'll say at the property owner's expense. Unless I'm contributing to the township, in which case, if I'm contributing to the township, then the township would be on the hook to build it in the future if they wanted to.
Right.
That's a discussion for township staff and and the owner. How we do and handle fees or costs.
Well, it sounds like the planning commission is an agree, is in agreement to do something along those lines, so.
Okay.
Why don't we move forward?
Okay, now, Steve, did I, do I remember from our conversation that we wanted to talk about the width of the cartway? Um, because of on-street parking capability?
Uh, yeah, we should talk about that. Um, the ordinance is a little bit gray on the on the larger lots. Uh, the the plan is proposed with a twenty twenty-eight foot wide cartway with curb, which which is the the standard requirement. But there's then a caveat in the ordinance that says if the township wants parking uh, on either side of the road, if the road could be widened or or conversely, you know, parking signs installed. Um, these are larger lots. There's plenty of parking on the property. The question always becomes spill over parking on a road like this, when somebody has a party or picnic, people end up parking on the road anyway. Um, I I don't know anyone's thoughts on parking. I guess my two cents is if we got sidewalk on one side, maybe put a parking lane on the opposite side?
I don't know if I'm in lot uh, lots on that side, lot eight or or the front lot that I want parking on my side because they're having a picnic on their side.
Yeah.
And and just one other point on there. I think with the with the twenty-eight foot wide street and potentially infrequent parking, um, twenty is probably wide enough to have parking on one side. You would still have, even with an eight-foot parking lane, you'd have twenty feet to get past.
What's uh, uh, Rose Cliff? Is that twenty-eight? You know?
Rose Cliff, uh, it's at least twenty-eight. I I I don't recall, cause that has those uh, parallel parking, or not the parallel, but the perpendicular parking lots. It doesn't have parking on the main section of the road.
Yeah, but we have relatives and and we end up at Easter and some other holidays there and and people park on that road and it's not an issue if they're parking on one side. It gets tight if they park on both sides. And you can, you know, you can put up signs to stagger that to avoid having having parking on both sides across from one another. Um, I think that's what they do there.
Well, I I I think, I think if you, if the planning commission agreed to parking on one side, we would have them uh, install signs on the other side. So ultimately, the township could enforce it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that being said, I think I'm fine with the with the cartway with a twenty-eight. If, you know, you got you got big lots here, then I mean, how close are the houses to the, well, proposed houses? To the route? Yeah, so you got plenty of room for parking in front of garages and whatnot.
This is Tim. I'm fine with that.
This is Alex. I agree.
Andy.
Uh, this is Steve again. We all agreed to the twenty-eight foot width, but did we agree to have parking on one side and posted on the on the other side?
This is Tim. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
John, I'm okay.
Yeah, I I think that's a nice compromise. If you got a sidewalk on one side, I think the other side could take the overfill parking.
Okay, so parking signs are going on the right-hand side of the cul-de-sac as we look at the plan then. Is that what you're saying?
The no parking?
Correct. Yeah, sidewalk goes on the right-hand side. The the part, no parking signs also go on the right-hand side. So if you park, you get out and walk across the street and get onto the sidewalk or walk up your, the the driveway that to the house you're going to.
Correct. Yeah, this is Chris. I agree with that.
Alex, I agree.
This is John again. I I think that it makes more sense to put the sidewalk on the same side as the parking. So somebody getting out of the passenger side can get out, get out on the sidewalk and not get out in the mud.
Yeah, this is Tim. I would agree with that. I would keep the parking on the same side as the sidewalk. I mean, I wanna beat a dead horse here, but again, that goes back to my first time about lot one and lot eight, you know? They're having a picnic across the street. Well, I don't want them parking on my side. Yeah, you know what I mean, like?
This is Alex. I think the reality is they're gonna park on the side with the sidewalk, no matter what we say.
So I would, I would say, this is Timmy, I would say, part, you know, uh, sidewalk on the right side heading in and then no parking on the left side.
Yes, I'd like to uh, change my vote on that. I'm thinking about another relative's house where they don't have sidewalk and you get out and you step in a in a wet ditch every time we go there. Um. So yeah, I think I would agree with that. Get out of the car and you got a sidewalk right there instead of somebody's yard.
This is Andy Encha. I'll I'll concur with that also. Parking on the same side as the sidewalk.
And I've changed my vote as well, Chris.
Okay, good point, John. Thank you. Okay, so you got that, Andrew?
Yes, I have direction on that.
Good. I'm glad we could finally give you some.
What's that?
I said, I'm glad we could finally give you some.
There you go. Um. Uh, E is a comment regarding the uh, intersection with County Line Road. Um, so I need to show on the plans um, that we have adequate site distance. That's something I I showed horizontally, but I didn't I didn't show vertically, but I will put that on the plans. Um, F is um, the fact that I need to get a Penn Dot approval and and I think once I make the revisions uh, based on tonight's meeting, uh, I'll be ready to go to Penn Dot and the Conservation District if if that's okay with you guys. Um, so that we can start incorporating their comments in as well. Um, item G.
Could I, can I interrupt there, Andy? Andrew, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the only thing we didn't, we didn't talk about, and I think it's buried in one of these comments, is is whether or not the township feels there should be any extra road improvements along County Line Road, other than just at the intersection, the way you have it shown on the plan currently. Or in the alternative, defer to Penn Dot and let them.
Yeah, I so, so what I did for this project is um, there are, there are a number of of trees. There's a tree row right along County Line Road. And in the area from, from uh, shall we say, from the on the plan, a little bit left of the the new cul-de-sac down to the detention basin area, um, those those trees I've removed and cleared out the area. So you have adequate site distance. And I put in a swell along County Line Road to make sure that um, that the uh, side of County Line Road was adequately draining because there really isn't much of any swell there now. So uh, I have, the only improvements that I'm showing along County Line Road at this point is this roadside swell. Um, and then we're putting new street trees in. So um, that's, I'm not proposing any road widening along County Line Road at this point, only because there hasn't been any road widening up and down the street. So uh, I figured we would just leave it as it is. Um, but obviously, the improvements like, things like widening curb and sidewalk would be part of your ordinance. So I would need a waiver for that.
Correct. You'd need to ask for a waiver if the planning commission was generally in agreement. And and Andrew, just again, to be clear, I I might touch on it later, but the way this is configured along the frontage, the the roadway actually comes out at more or less a high point along the property frontage.
That's correct.
The drainage goes either way away from the, the new intersection.
That's correct. Yeah, this is really the only place that uh, we can stick the cul-de-sac in unless I violate the um, the wetland setback down in the right-hand corner where the detention basin is now. I had looked in in sketch. When I put a sketch together, I looked at uh, putting the driveway, uh, the cul-de-sac access all the way down there. But I didn't have adequate site distance down in that area. Plus, I was violating the 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 setback from wetlands.
Sure. And for and for what it's worth, this would be similar to Kratts where um, they did do drainage improvements along the road, but no road widening or other improvements.
What did we do down at Ingram's Way there? Coming up?
That there's just a wide return radiuses and little little flares there.
Right, okay.
I think there might be a widening at the uh, right-hand side approaching Ingram's Way as you're coming up the hill.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, Penn Dot doesn't allow those anymore. They want the radius returns to be larger and no turning lanes because they feel that people don't understand how to use a deceleration lane properly. So they no longer want to see them. I'm not saying that I wouldn't propose that if you guys want that. Um, but Penn Dot's preference is to not have them anymore.
And I'd agree. People don't know how to use them.
Alright, um. So we don't know where, I remember reading something about that in the review, but I don't know where it was.
Yeah, I can't find it off the top here.
When we get to it, we'll make notes of it. Um, but I mean, does anybody have any any strong input on this?
I'd say let Penn Dot call the shots because they're the ones who are gonna do it anyhow. It's Alex.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would defer to Penn Dot.
It's the next comment on the next page.
Yeah, it's number, I was just gonna say, this is Tim. It's number three. It's the next comment, so.
Alright, so let's let's finish up this page and we'll we'll hit that when we get to the top of the next page.
Okay, good. Uh, comment uh, G is regarding the street name of Schlosser Road. I'm not married to it. I just threw it on there for fun. So if you guys uh, if you guys would rather it be named something else, I'm, you know, open to it. But I will probably, if you guys don't have a problem with the road name, I will probably throw that out to the roadmaster to to find out if that's good with them.
Uh, this is Chris. I don't have a problem with it. It might have to be Lane or something like that rather than Road.
I'm pretty flexible.
I have no problem with it, Alex.
Andy Encha, no, no problem.
John, I'm fine.
This is Tim. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so um, the last comment on this page is is uh, Steve just allowing himself the option to comment some more later. Uh, on to page three, uh, this is where we address the the waiver request for County Line Road improvements. Um. So I don't, I I I guess what I'm hearing is that you guys are okay with what I have shown unless Penn Dot wants something different?
That would, this is Chris, that would be my take on everyone's input.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Tim. I'm, that's what I believe.
Andy Encha, agreed.
Alex, agreed.
John, agreed. Okay, thank you. Alright, so number four?
Four, um, this is a request for me to um, remove the the waivers request from the plan and and put it in um, a note, a letter form, which we'll take care of. Uh, the fifth one is a waiver request because I have some uh, bends in the property lines. If we take a look at um, lots, the lot line between four and five. And then lot eight has a a number of, lot eight is the leftover land, shall we, shall we call it? Um, and is shaped the way it is because of the existing driveway that wraps down and will now connect into the new cul-de-sac. Um, along with, you know, it was already an existing irregularly shaped lot. So um, this basically, this basically wraps around all the wetlands and um, the existing driveway and the existing house and barn is is kind of what's driving the shape of what's left over. Um, lot between, the lot line between four and five, I started the lot lines perpendicular. Uh, the lot between, the line between four and five gets back into the area where the wetlands are. And it breaks and is parallel to the upper line, the upper property line for lot five. So that's why that break is there. And if you guys would prefer me to remove that, I can shift that property line down some and straighten that line out. So I think that would leave that up to you gentlemen, if you have a preference.
Um. How often have we looked the other way on the regular lot lines?
This is Steve. We do it regularly. Uh, the ordinance, the ordinance requirement was really established to to give us some teeth if there's really crazy lots being proposed just to get, you know, jam another house in somewhere. These, these seem pretty regular. Andrew, this is Alex. Is there any problem with straightening out the um, north lot line on lot three between three and four?
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's the, that's the, I was thinking that was four and five, but that is um, that is the lot line I was talking about. I can straighten that out if if you'd like.
But Andrew, this is Steve. Were you gonna keep it perpendicular to the right of way and push it all the way back to the back property line?
Yeah, I would shift, you know, the, out along the, out along the new cul-de-sac, I would shift that property line down towards County Line Road so that it's a straight line to the back uh, without affecting on those um, septic system areas.
Okay, I I would, that that's fine. I was just gonna say lot four has a lot of restrictions on it. There's only so much buildable area. So I'd hate to see it cut off some of the back, you know, yard area of lot four if you didn't have to.
Yeah, I I think I held, I, what I did, I think is I I um, set that property line like the, what I is the required width. I think it's a hundred and fifty feet. I think it's 150 feet. I think I set that down about 150 feet, maybe a little bit more to, to have it, the back part of that be like a regular lot. Um, and I figured the, the owner of lot three probably wouldn't spend a lot of time back in the, the marshy wooded area. Um, and so it really wouldn't matter to him whether or not he had a bend in his property back there or not. So I can go either way. It just really depends on what you guys feel is better.
Andrew, this is Alex. I, I agree with you. I think that makes a lot of sense based on your explanation.
Okay.
This is Tim. I don't have any problem with the lots the way they are.
This is Andy. Yeah, John, I'm fine with it as drawn. The lot lines.
Okay.
This is John. I agree.
Hi, this is Chris. I'm, I'm on board.
Okay, uh, the next comment then is regarding, uh, gang mailboxes. I, I probably wouldn't recommend a gang mailbox for, um, properties this, of this size. But if you guys are seeing a lot of that and that's what you want, then I'll take that to the postmaster.
This is Steve. Yeah, we, we are seeing a lot. They, they want to put gang mailboxes everywhere now. Um, it depends on the postmaster, which particular post office, but please verify with them so we don't have to struggle with it later on.
Will do.
Hey, uh, Andrew, getting back to number five, this is Chris. Uh, so you're going to provide a, a waiver request for the, the regular lot lines then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number seven, I guess, next.
Yes. Um, so this has to do with the, the way that, uh, you folks accept right-of-way dedication as an easement rather than actual taking of, of the property. Um, and I don't have a problem with addressing this. I think this may become an issue with PennDOT where they may want to take some of the right-of-way here. So I won't know that until I get to PennDOT, but, um, you know, I'm willing to work this out with, um, you know, whatever your ordinance requires and, and you guys want me to do on this. Yeah. Uh, comment eight, I'm, I'm willing to go along with, um, I think the, the, uh, the, the finding of the existing monuments just didn't show up on the plan, so I'll need to, to make note of those and then I'll, uh, put down concrete monuments where it's required. Uh, mine is regarding the recreation land and I guess that there's a, um, a donation to be made to, um, some sort of park and rec fund, I guess. I, I don't. Um, I, I don't know that it's appropriate to put a recreational area of 1,400 square foot on this track. It's just, it just seems kind of silly.
I'd agree with that, Alex.
So you're proposing to make a, uh, donation or a contribution to whatever fund it's supposed to go into?
Yes, I, I, I think that would be appropriate unless you guys feel otherwise.
I, I, I certainly don't.
This is Tim. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Andy, I'm, I'm okay with it as well.
Okay.
John, I agree.
Okay, so next up is item 10 and it's, uh, stormwater management issues. And, uh, Tim and I, uh, Tim, Steve and I have talked about this, uh, a little bit and there still are some, some issues that I have to work out when I do the, uh, design work for, um, the conservation district. And there may be some difficulty in getting to the township's requirement of, uh, getting the impervious surface ratios all the way, um, how do I say this? The existing, getting the existing impervious to be considered as meadow. And I may need a partial waiver on that because the improvements that, uh, exist are really focused to the zoning restrictions, the setback from the wetlands, um, and I don't really have room to put any detention basin facilities on that side of the cul-de-sac. So I am, I, and I, and I don't think I'm going to be able to get the stormwater from the existing improvements to the far side of the cul-de-sac into that detention basin that's there. So, uh, I'm going to do as much as I can and, um, and I'm hoping that it's enough that, um, Steve will be okay with it and that you guys will be okay with it. So, uh, I may be back for a partial waiver on some of these stormwater management issues.
Steve, on that point, um, we have on, on some occasions allowed the waiver that Andrew's asking for, but, uh, and the waiver basically, uh, would allow him to comply with the NPDS requirement, which is a, is a 20% conversion of existing features to, or existing impervious to meadow instead of 100%. Uh, in, in this case, I, I wouldn't have an objection to that.
Um, all right.
Okay, do you, do you guys want to go through all these stormwater comments one by one? Or is it okay if I work these out with Steve, uh, in the future after I get through or get into, uh, the design for the conservation district?
Give me a minute here.
And, and while you're going through that, I would just add that I'm not going to be asking for a recommendation for preliminary approval this evening, gentlemen. I'm just, just here to get direction from you.
Yeah, you weren't going to get it anyway.
Okay.
Uh, Steve, is there any reason for us to go through these? As a planning commission?
No, no, there's nothing else that's a quote unquote, "planning issue."
Do you want to get to 11 then?
Uh, yeah, 11. So, uh, this is discussion regarding the, um, the landscaping plan. Uh, I am going to be asking for, uh, a couple of waivers on the amount of trees. I don't know. Do you, do you have, um, do we need to bring up a slide? Have you guys, have you guys had a chance to look at the landscaping plan? Or can we bring up the slide that says aerial plan with landscaping? Is Greg still there?
I'm here. Um, I did the five that you gave me. So Sherri, if you want to go to the next one. The next one. Is that it?
Nope. Keep going. Keep going.
This is Alex. It looks like it's sheet 14.
Yeah, I only got, I got five, five on this one.
Well, yeah, this is, this is something I just threw together for, uh, tonight's meeting so that the site would be all in one picture rather than spread across, across, uh, two different plans. Uh, but I think you can see the, uh, proposed trees that I have in here. There's a lot of street trees that run around the cul-de-sac and down County Line Road to fill in the gaps. Uh, and then we have a number of replacement trees. Um, and one of the comments in here is, is regarding, uh, how I calculated that the, um, replacement trees. But, uh, you can see that I tried to, basically I tried to use those replacement trees and plant them in along the property lines so that the property lines would have, uh, some definition to them. Um, so I guess, uh, if we want to, I think I'm, I think I'm still short about 110 trees. So, uh, I can squeeze a couple more in here, uh, if you guys want to see a lot more. Um, I guess I'd just throw it out to you guys to see if you're comfortable with what's there now. Um, I, I think as, as always, um, what we don't plant, we end up making a contribution to the township to plant somewhere else. So, uh, whether you want them here or somewhere else, I kind of, I guess I would be willing to leave that up to you guys.
Is there, is there any hardship as to why you wouldn't be able to plant more?
I can plant more. I, there's just a lot of trees out there.
Right, right.
I'm just wondering if we tie this back to stormwater a little bit. If we could, uh, maybe discuss with Perkyoma Watershed Conservancy, if there'd be something they'd want to see in the way of, um, repairing buffer plantings or something like that that we might do instead of trees?
Are you suggesting that to do riparian, uh, plantings on this property or elsewhere in the township?
I was thinking maybe on this one, just to help ameliorate some of the stormwater issues.
You can do that. Yeah, that's fine.
Any other input from other members or Steve?
I, I don't have a particular input. I, I think I need to, to talk, work with Andy to make sure that he, he did do the calculation right. And I'm not suggesting that it would be even more trees. I'm saying it, it may be somewhat less trees, but, uh, there's a, I think it's a, oh, there's a lot of trees that aren't shown. It's not a matter of just fitting another 10 or 20 trees on the property. I think it's upwards of 100 potentially trees. Uh, so I don't know that you'd find a whole, you know, place to put that many trees with and still have a place to build a house.
Right.
We could talk about that a little bit more. And we always, we've, we've taken contributions in the past for partial tree issues.
Right, okay.
This is Tim. I'm comfortable with whatever, uh, Steve is, uh, willing to support.
Uh, this is Chris. Well, well said. I agree with Tim.
Andy Unchuk, no, no, no comments. That's fine.
John, I agree.
This is Alex. Like I said, that 130 more trees on this seem to be kind of ridiculous. That's why I was trying to find another option.
Right. And I, I think that's something worth looking into, what you have suggested.
Okay, well, I, I think I'll leave that with, I'll talk to Steve about making sure I have the calculation, uh, correct. And then, um, I will try to, to plant, um, more trees to help with the stormwater situation. And then if there's still some, uh, more, then I guess we'll be making the contribution.
Yeah. Good enough.
Okay. Uh, if we move on to 12 on the next page, um, has to do with us doing, uh, getting approval for the erosion semi-control and the NPDS approval and we'll start working on that, um, after tonight's meeting. The comment 13, um, is a discussion on, um, the fact that we have public water on here. And at this point, I'm proposing that all the new houses would get the public water and the, the existing farmhouse would, uh, remain on the well. Um, we'll be running that through Telfer Borough Authority for their approval as well.
Yeah, this is Steve. I was going to say, did Mark comment on that yet?
What's that?
I, that's what I was just going to ask. If Mark Fornier commented on, on that issue of keeping the well for the farmhouse yet?
He, he, he has not. Uh, he knows that this project is coming, but he hasn't seen the design. So, um, you know, with the next submission that we make here, or the next set of plans that we put together, we'll make that submission to the Borough Authority as well.
Andrew, has that well seen any, uh, any issues from the quarry?
No, my father has not said anything about that. Um, he's, he's never had a problem with that well. Now, his well might be deeper than the others. I don't know how deep that well is, but, um, you know, I think when we put that water line in, we'll have a, um, we'll have them put a tap in for that lot in case it is ever needed. But, um, you know, there was only two of them living there most of those years, uh, that it, the house was there. So, you know, if somebody were to move in with a, you know, a family of four or five, they might see a different situation. So we want to have that tap available in case it's eventually needed.
Right, that makes sense.
Chris, this is Alex. I think you're close enough to the top of the hill. You might actually be in a diabase geology as opposed to the, um, Brunswick or Locktong where the, the quarry is. So they may be on a completely different aquifer.
I'm nodding my head like I know what you were talking about.
Yeah, I am too, Chris.
John, impressive.
I'll be sure to put that in my report to the supervisors.
Seven years of college, what can I say?
There you go.
You're gonna have to write that down for me.
Yes, yeah, how do you spell that?
Anyway, um.
Okay.
So, anyway, 13 is a will comply.
Yeah, so 14 is a will comply as well. It's a discussion regarding the need for the sewage facilities planning modules. Pence Trail is going to be handling all that work for us. So, um, you know, we'll keep moving that, the ball forward on that one as well. Uh, 15 is a requirement for a, a summary, a narrative summary of the development, which I guess I missed. So I'll be including that. Um, 16, um, apparently I missed the, the requirement to notify the adjoining property owners. So we'll be getting those out shortly. Uh, item 17, we do need to talk about. That is, uh, regarding streetlight installation. And, uh, I guess I need some direction as to what, what the township is looking for these days as far as streetlights are concerned. I'm not proposing anything, by the way.
Okay. Got an answer for that, Alex?
This, this is Steve. And quite often on our streets, we've done minimal lighting, basically intersections and, and cul-de, and the cul-de-sacs. Uh, we have, we don't light up the streets like, you know, say Percasie Borough does. Uh, but, you know, it's subject to the planning commission things.
This is Tim. I think we had said previously about like post lights, like at the end of the drives, right?
Uh, that was the option we did in, uh, Kratts. Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I think we, we do that. We offer that as a solution for, uh.
Yeah, this is Alex.
Alex, I, I didn't hear what you said. Alex, could you?
I was just asking if would be lighting requirements for the driveways, but the, the post lights might, might address that.
Yeah, we have, I don't have a problem with that. We can, we can do, we can propose a post light with a photo cell that would automatically turn on, uh, at dusk. So, you know, that's something that we often do as a solution. Uh, and certainly I'd be willing to do that in this case.
Andrew, like, my feed cut out on me there. Would, would somebody suggest that we did, uh, post lights at the, in a driveway or something to that effect?
Yeah, I think Steve mentioned that, that on Kratts, we did that, um, a post light. And I think typically when we do a post light, uh, when we show post lights on the plans, we include a requirement for a photo cell so that the light automatically comes on.
Okay.
This is Steve. I guess the, my only question then is, would you still want a streetlight at the intersection out at County Line Road?
What do we have down at Ingram's Way?
Again, I don't know if there's anything down there.
I believe there's nothing there.
I don't think.
In the beginning.
Is it a, a requirement?
Well, the, the ordinance requires streetlights. We've always done minimal lighting and waived the full requirement. And I, I'm just looking at it as a, you know, safety.
Sure.
Issue.
Where's, uh, the drive from, from lot two? I mean, well, I guess lot one on the other side would be the closest to the road. Correct.
I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
The, the, the driveway for lot one would be the, would be the closest driveway to County Line Road, correct?
If you, if you said lot one, then yes. Lot one and lot two line up to each other. Uh, they are the two closest to the road.
Steve, have we ever done anything like spotlighting on, uh, a sign for the entrance? Like a, a subdivision name sign or something like that as opposed to street lighting?
No, we haven't. I'm not saying you can't, but we have not. We, actually, we don't really have monument signs anywhere. Except maybe Wellington Village has one, but that's an HOA sign.
Oh, okay. Huh. I mean, I'd like to keep safety at the forefront, but I don't want to be overbearing about it. Um, I'm just trying to think what other, what other developments we have, you know, where we have lighted entrances like this. Is there a utility pole near the entrance?
Uh, there is. I don't know exactly where it is relative to the, relative to the, uh, to the cul-de-sac, but there is one pretty close, I believe.
I assume you're gonna feed all these houses with underground electric service?
Yes.
So you'll need a takeoff pole at some point for that.
Yes.
Maybe put a light on that.
I can do that.
I mean, depending on that existing pole's proximity to the intersection would be whether it was.
Yes.
Worthwhile. You're gonna have the underground electric. So to put another little boulevard style, we don't put big streetlights up. We use those, generally use those boulevard style, you know, 12 foot tall poles, poles with lights on them.
There's a, there's a house across the street. Is that something that, that we should be, I should be discussing with that property owner as to whether or not they want a streetlight there?
I would imagine they wouldn't.
But they're in Montgomery County. Whether that means anything or not.
Just talked to the tour effect about a nice fill.
I don't think it's directly across from the house from what I'm looking at.
The, the cul-de-sac?
Right.
No, it's not. But I think that pole, I think that pole is between the cul-de-sac and the driveway that serves that house.
Oh, an existing pole?
Yeah, there's an exist, there is, the existing poles are on the other side of the street from this development. So we're gonna have to run, you know, when we bring it in, I don't know if, but this is interesting because it's a county line. I wonder if Pico or PPL serves. I'm not sure. We might have, we might have a break here. So, um, research on the electricity here to see exactly what, what, how this is gonna be served. I didn't think about that before this discussion.
I mean, my, my, my recommendation, if you want that, is to have a light at the intersection and then the driveway post at the rest of the driveways.
I was just gonna say, if it's just a 12 foot boulevard lamp, I, I would suggest doing that myself.
Okay.
This is Tim. I'm comfortable with that as well.
Encha, okay.
Alex, I agree.
Okay, um, moving on to 18 is, um, is for the developer, uh, development financial security agreement, which we're agreeable to. And of course, when we get, when we get close to the end, we'll prepare an opinion of cost. Then the final comment is, um, Steve allowing himself a chance to, uh, review me at his will.
All right. So what, you run out of time, Steve?
Uh, in part, but, uh, it wasn't much of a slowdown. And made everything harder. But, I mean, some of, some of these road issues and things had, had to be resolved too. Not a lot of sense of picking apart a plan and then changing half the details on the plan anyway.
Right. All right. So you're gonna clean this up and come back with your waiver requests and narrative and everything, uh, we're suggesting you have to do?
Yes. Um, and I'd like to get the bull rolling with Pendot. And I think I need to have some sort of letter from the township, um, stating that you're comfortable with the layout as it is. So I'm gonna be requesting that Greg prepare something to that effect. I don't know that the planning commission makes that decision as to whether or not they're ready to release it. But, um, I will be looking forward, looking for some sort of letter from the township saying it's okay for me to go to Pendot.
This is Steve. Generally, yeah, we, we handle that as an, as an administrative issue. If you, if you have a Pendot plan ready or almost ready, I'd like you to forward that to us. And then we'll, you know, we'll just reference that in our, in our letter. Otherwise we could give you a letter saying we reviewed the subdivision or are in the process of reviewing a subdivision.
Yeah, I, I haven't started working on the Pendot plan. I would, I would do that, you know, with this round of revisions based on this letter and our comments here. Um, and I would, you know, when I make the changes for that, uh, plan set, then I'll, you know, add in all the Pendot required stuff and the conservation district required stuff and, um, move off to those agencies as well as, um, Telfer Borough Authority for their, for their review. So everybody gets a shot at the next set of plans.
Okay. Well, this is Steve. When, when you're ready to go to Pendot, um, email the township manager and myself and, and ask for that letter and we'll take care of it.
Okay. Sounds good. I appreciate it.
All right. Andrew, do you need anything else from us?
No, if you guys are, are, um, without any more comments, I'll leave you to the rest of your meeting.
All right. Anybody have any other questions or comments for Andrew?
John, I'm good.
This is Tim. I do not. Good luck, Andrew.
This is Alex. No comment.
Andy Encha, not at this time.
All right, gentlemen.
Hold on. I am assuming Greg, you didn't get any comments emailed to you?
No, I did not get any comments emailed.
I forgot about that. Uh, okay. Well, Andrew, thank you. Uh, good luck. We'll see you when you get it together.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, gentlemen. And I'll be seeing you in a couple of months, I would imagine.
All right. Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
All right. Moving forward, uh, next on the agenda is Fresco. Do you wanna jump in here?
Sure. Uh, just confirm everyone here, are you okay? Correct?
Yes.
This is Scott. Scott from Keystone. Yep.
Yes, I can hear you.
Good.
Thank you. Um, well, good evening. And, um, just to follow up, just to recap, um, we were before the planning commission and at the March meeting. And, um, we went over our, our plans, uh, had received some very, uh, good suggestions and some questions from the, from the planning commission. Um, and in addition to that, we had indicated several waivers that we'll go through in a minute in the letter. And, um, and also the other, you know, big picture thing here, there was quite a few items of cleanup on the plan, although I don't believe we identified anything major on the plan that would be a showstopper. Uh, there was a, a fair amount of, um, detailed comments that we had to go through and clean up. And so I think, um, I think we made significant progress on the plan, but you can certainly be the judge of that. Uh, and I think, um, to move forward here, Steve's letter is probably as good an outline as anything to cover all the issues we talked about. I think he did a good job memorializing even the, the planning commission's comments. They're, they seem to be contained in the letters. So unless anybody has any, uh, initial, um, questions or comments, I was just planning to go through the letter one by one. And some of these we can just gloss over quickly. Others might warrant a little bit more discussion.
Uh, that sounds like a good plan to me. So I'll go ahead.
Okay. And I also should mention, as you heard from beginning of the meeting, Jeff Hammond from Fresco is on the line as well. So if you have any questions for him, he'll be, he'll be able to answer those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, um, you can see the plan up in front of you. That's just the big picture overall plan. I didn't want to burden the, uh, IT support, uh, or the IT system, I should say, with the whole plan set. So I've just got a brief, a few plans together that we might need to reference. So comment number one is just, uh, about the, the, um, capacity calculations. They were just acknowledging that they appear to be acceptable. So we had no action on this one required. Um, moving on to comment number two, there was some confusion at the last planning commission meeting. Um, we initially had proposed a 50 foot building height at the previous submission. And there's a question raised of whether or not the prior zoning relief granted would be sufficient to cover that because the ordinance only permitted a 35 foot building height. So some research was done. Uh, we were informed that the prior ordinance was specific to that case and it does not include, it's not a blanket approval for the whole site. So in response to that, Fresco has decided to scale back their, the height of their building to a, a permitted height of 35 feet maximum. And, and practically speaking, what that, what that's going to be is it's going to match. I don't have, can't really point here. I don't have a laser pointer, but you see the building three expansion, which is the elongated expansion that runs left and right on the plan. The, the height of that roof would match the existing facility. They're not planning to go higher than that. If in the future, um, building plans change and they did want to go higher, we would certainly, uh, need to, you know, get, get approval for that. But at this time, we're planning to stay within the limits of zoning and match the building heights. And, and just, just for a thing, there is a clarification we have into the township as far as where that height is measured from. But whatever the case, we'll comply with the 35 foot, 35 foot, uh, pipe requirement. Any questions on that? Should I, good to move on?
I think you're good there.
Okay. I mean, the summary of that is will comply. Uh, number three is, uh, goes off on a list of waivers and we did add one deferral as well to that list. So some of these are, we discussed last time, uh, number, letter A there, number three A, uh, regarding the, the number of plantings. I did check with our landscape architect. We were 13 trees short of making the requirements. Um, so I think, uh, you know, we're, we're close, but to, to put them in there, you, you did pretty much put, put the trees wherever they can go in, in the, you know, the recommended, uh, fashion. Those were 13 trees short. I think that was a question last time. So your, your comments on that?
Did we, did we make comment on that, uh, as to whether we give a little leniency? I don't remember the station we had on this.
This, this is Steve. I think at, at last meeting, we, we wanted to know what the extent of the shortage was. Now they've provided that 13 trees. This is really, I believe, the rear parking areas where it's difficult to get trees around the perimeter of the parking where you normally would put them because the parking is up against the, the buildings effectively.
Got you. Um, do we get a, uh, a fee in lieu of for the trees that don't go in?
That's always a discussion with staff. Yes.
Okay. So if we, uh, if we allow this, there's gonna be discussion about the fee in lieu of for the trees that don't go in. Uh, any input from the other members on this?
John, I don't.
This is Tim. Is I?
Go ahead, Tim.
So, okay. Uh, I would just, I, based on our last meeting, I think we were, you know, somewhat comfortable with the fact that they put in as many trees as they could, but yet, you know, the fee in lieu of discussion would probably need to be had.
This is Andy. I don't have any, I have no further input.
All right. Well, hearing from anyone else, uh, I think PC is probably willing to, uh, waive that, uh, just knowing that there's gonna be discussion about the fee in lieu of.
Right. And that was anticipated. So we, we, I don't, Jeff's online. He can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe there's an issue with that.
Okay.
Okay. The, then if we're ready to move on, the next waiver request was for the traffic study. And, uh, just an update to this one. Previously we had stated that there was no, a net zero increase in employee traffic in a nominal, uh, additional three trucks per day. There has been an update. We just learned about this. Um, there isn't gonna be a small increase in employees. It's gonna be 10 or less. We don't know how many yet, but just to correct the record, we did want to let you know about that. The motivation and justification behind the waiver that we don't feel the study, uh, would be needed, it's still a very de minimis impact. So our, our requests would be the same for a waiver to that item for the same exact reasons. It's just going to be not a zero, a zero amount of, uh, employees. It would be a nominal increase of 10 or less.
Okay. So I think at our last meeting, we, we basically agreed with that. But Steve had brought up the point that this is probably the third project where we've waived traffic studies. So I would assume the next time you come in, if you come in with another project, we're probably gonna want to see something, uh, cause you, every time you have a, a project, you're adding a couple of, a couple of trucks and a couple of employees. So the, the aggregate is increasing. So if you come in with another project after this one, I'm probably gonna, probably gonna require that. I think is what the, that's what the discussion we had that last meeting. So that being said, uh, does anyone have a problem waiving the traffic study for this project?
John, I don't.
Alex, I don't.
Andy, no.
Tim, no.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Uh, you know what? I, my feed went out on me again. I didn't hear anybody's comments, but I'm assuming everybody was fine with it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, so yeah, uh, street improvements.
Okay. Street improvements, uh, also requesting a waiver for that, like we discussed last time for basically the same reasons. Right. Our, uh, our improvements are way in the back of the facility, you know, minimal increase to traffic. So we, for the same justifications, basically, um, we're requesting a waiver for this, this roadway improvements as well.
Okay. Um, and again, you might have to rethink that if you do another project, but, uh, I think we had agreed at the last meeting that, uh, we were willing to waive. Uh, any? I was gonna run through the planning commission. Tim, you have any input on this?
Andy, no.
Tim, no. That, that was my recollection too, that if, uh, the next project, there would be probably some consideration given all these.
Right.
Alex, no.
John, no.
Okay. Sorry for taking so much time on these things, but I want to make sure we got it covered. Um, so Dee?
Yes. So that, that was the waiver for the perimeter fencing around the basin. Uh, it's located kind of on the lower left corner of the black and white plan there. It's indicated by a dash line. And if it's possible to advance the, the slides to add two color photos at the end of the presentation that illustrate, if we can start on the first, not that one, the next one, please. Right there. This is the plan view of that area, just to provide a little bit of a graphic. And there is a, a kind of a street view, a, a ground level shot next. But to start on this plan, the, uh, the red oval there is approximate location of where the stormwater facility is located. And it's indicating the solid yellow line indicates the line of sight from the play area of the church. And then the dash yellow line indicates the line of sight from the ground, which you'll see clearly in a minute. Um, it's about 400 feet from there. There is vegetation. Uh, the, the, the photo that we're about to see, if you don't mind, we can come back to this, but if you don't mind going to the next ground level photo. This is standing behind, you know, to, to the viewer's back would be the church building, looking through the playground. And what you see there on the, kind of the top left-hand corner, there's a red leader pointing to it is the, the loading dock, that last stall of the loading dock, which is in the line of sight. And, uh, you can see where the other leader just to the right is, is the approximate location of the basin. And this was, the photo was taken in April, so there's not a lot of foliage on the trees, not a lot of leaves. Um, it, it doesn't appear to be very visible, if visible at all. And so based on the distance, um, and the lack of visibility, uh, the thought is that that would not entice the children or whoever to, to run up in the basin. I mean, there is a basin there now. It's been there for quite some time. But those are just some items for your consideration if you, if you would agree with that or if you feel differently.
Um, yeah, this is Chris. I, I appreciate you doing that because I, I really had no idea how close it was. And this, you know, this does show a good deal of distance and, and, uh, lack of visibility. So I, I think I'd be all right, uh, waving the fence.
This is Andy. I'm, I'd still like to see the fence. I'd be interested to hear what the other planning commissioners, uh, would like, you know, say about that.
This is Alex and I agree with you, Andy. I think it's just prudent.
This is John. I, I agree. Go ahead, Tim.
That's right. This is Tim. I, I really have no, uh, you know, one way or the other, I mean, whatever the, the commission decides, I, I think it's, it's already there. It's existing. There hasn't been any issues yet. At the same time, you know, it is somewhat prudent, but, uh, I would be comfortable, um, either way.
All right. Well, it sounds like, uh, planning commission would like to see fence.
Okay. Um, I, I, Jeff, if I don't, we can talk with Jeff about that. Um, I, I, Jeff, if I don't, we can talk with Jeff about that, I don't think that's, we can just go ahead and propose that on the next plan revision.
Yeah, I, I think that's an issue. We, we can do that.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If, if I could just chime in here, you know, we'll, we'll consider options, that the standard option has always been like a, a split rail type fence with wire, wire mesh backing, but some people have done that, 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 you know, an aluminum fence or, or some other options. Um, it's generally a low, like a four-foot fence, not, it's not eight-foot high cyclone fence with barbed wire, so.
This is Alex, I'd even be willing to consider something like a, um, a thorny hedge row or something like that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the consideration, and we will investigate some of those options and then, um, you know, discuss those with Steve as needed, and go from there, so. But we'll, we'll do something there.
Yeah, so planning commission wants some type of protection around there.
Right. No, we hear, we hear you. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll work something up and get it over to Steve on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Think kid proof.
Okay, the next item is, uh, is a, is a new, well, I think that's right, the next item, letter E, is, is a new addition since the last planning commission, uh, meeting, what had occurred there. Uh, there is a, um, a requirement for a twenty percent of the site to be covered with covered in woodlands. And, um, long story short, the, the site as proposed meets the requirement, we're just over twenty percent. But when the reserve parking area, if and when that were ever to be constructed, the site would no longer meet that requirement for the twenty percent of afforestation. So our proposal, or excuse me, our request is for a deferral to that item with the justification that it meets the requirement now, but if and when the reserve parking area were constructed, um, we would agree to either, uh, pro, pro, uh, provide the additional woodland areas to meet the twenty percent or pay a fee in lieu of whichever would be most prudent at the time.
Uh, Steve, have we ever done that before?
We, we have not, but the reforestation is an, is a relatively newer requirement. Um, we already have, will have an amended, uh, uh, you know, uh, I'm sorry, I'll have a recorded agreement for the reserve parking area, so it's not that much of a stretch to add some extra conditions into that agreement.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do that without getting tangled up, I would support that.
This is Alex, my only thought might be to show that there's an area for reforestation if we choose not to take the fee in lieu of as maybe a proposed or a future reforestation.
Yeah, there's certainly, this is Steve, there's certainly area on the, on the, uh, if you're going in the entrance, entrance road from uh, state road on the right-hand side, where we're going to talk about later some temporary parking, but that's more or less an open area uh, on that side of the entrance that could support trees if, ultimately they were required to be installed.
If, if I can chime in here real quick on that, there is a, a, a master plan, it's not a formal plan, it hasn't been anything of any, any standing whatsoever, but in our, the master plan that we prepared for Fresco, we did have some potential future development over there. Um, but at the same time, I mean, I don't think there'd be any harm in looking in light of that ma, we have a master plan, so we could look and see if we could identify some areas uh, based on that, and you know, just the, the potential, I mean, we wouldn't know until we got there as far as what would make the most sense, but if we could identify some areas, um, you know, to, to kind of plan for, if that would be satisfactory.
That was kind of my thinking, just to be able to show that the potential is there, even if it's never used.
Right.
This is Tim, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all, we can do that, and we'll identify some areas of, for the future of where we could possibly put that, and hopefully that won't be an issue at all. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, moving on, now there was a, a slew of, the letter F is lumped together, a slew of, uh, stormwater items, things like the basin bottom slope, and I, I'm forgetting, I do have the waiver request letter here, if we could pull up if we need to. Um, if you'd like, we can go through those one by one, or we can lump them all together, if, um, just apparently Steve was, no, had no objections to them.
Yeah, I think we could leave them lumped together, and you're right, I have no objections to them.
So we're going to go through your waiver request letter, so make sure we note that, uh, Steve's fine with all the, all the, uh, other requests, uh, listed, uh, here in F. Um, you want to go to G here?
G is just about the contribution, uh, in lieu of waves improvements, we acknowledge that that will be a discussion point and uh, that, that will be, that's coming, and so we acknowledge that.
Yeah.
And expect that. Uh, number four, um, parking area calculation, so, um, this comment warrants a little explanation. Uh, part of the, one of the comments at the last meeting was what about parking during construction, because if it, if it's possible to go back to the first slide with the overall black and white plan, that might be helpful to look at. Because you can see all the construction, it's a pretty substantial project, it never looks like much on a large-scale plan, but it's, it's a big quite a bit of excavation and, and work going to be done back there, and, um, and all the part, most, the majority of the parking, or at least a good portion of the, of the existing parking is going to be stepped on. And so we're going to need a place to park employees and staff during the construction process. So the area we've identified after, you know, much deliberation, we explored all kinds of options, um, had a whole matrix of possibilities there, and the one that seemed to be the most feasible and, and had the most benefits was to provide, and you can see it's a little black note in the upper right-hand corner, the same area we were talking about before. Um, right when, uh, the driveway splits off into two roads, immediately to the right as you're pulling into the site, that open area, we have a temporary parking area slated for a hundred twenty-four vehicles there, which was, is supposed to be the, um, the parking during construction. And so the particular comment here is, uh, I, I think it was just a typo on our plans. I accidentally specified the wrong product, I, I specified a product called grass pave, which is actually what I outlined from a previous project. In fact, it wasn't grass pave we're proposing, it's grass guard, it's a completely different thing. What it is, is a vinyl mesh that's rolled out and stapled with pins to the grass, it doesn't require disturbance of the grass. Uh, it just requires a mowing of the grass pretty tight, you, you lay down the mesh, um, you pin it, and then allow the grass to grow up through the webbing, and that produces a stable area, there's a, you know, they use it maybe tailgate areas and things like that. So our proposal would be to use that because of the, it wouldn't have a stormwater impact that would be anything measurable. And it would be, I mean, it's, it's not cheap, but it's, it seemed to be the best option considering everything else. So the, the comment here was specifically about that it might require a stone subbase. The grass pave product absolutely requires a stone subbase, but grass guard does not, it's just a simple surface application, and the grass grows up through it, like I said before. And, uh, there's a good part to that, but I'll pause for a second for comments.
What, what was the name of the, the matting?
It's called grass guard.
Grass guard.
HD is the particular product line, and we, we would specify that as an or equal, or approved equal, I should say. Uh, we didn't bother, and we did get some budget pricing, but we didn't want to get into the price shopping so much now, so I, I was very clear with them that this is going to be specified or equal, so if there's an equivalent product, um, we would, we would go with the best price, certainly.
Right. Steve, do you know anything about the product?
I do not know that product in particular, um, we'll certainly look into it, I could talk to Scott about it. Uh, again, our, our, our concern is just how much disturbance is needed to, to install this, and um, if there's, if it says, he explained it, it would seem ideal for this location. Uh, our second question is just depending on the time of the year, is it a product that could be maintained in the winter if you end up going over a winter season?
I could address that if, if you're ready for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the, over the winter, I mean, admittedly, there's not a lot of, if you look on the website for this product, you don't see a lot of winter applications, even this is a, I think, uh, you know, tailgate areas for a college, a college campus in Louisiana or something like that, it's, and they do a lot of work. So we did pro, propose on the, on the plan, we did provide some notes to the plan to, I, to address winter maintenance operations. Um, things, it's really just practical common sense, like for plowing, uh, we had delineated the spaces with, or with basically construction fencing, so people know where to bring the nose of their vehicle into. And, um, during plowing, we specified things like removal of the, the fencing to plow the, the snow out of the way. Also things like, you know, very common sense lifting the blade up so we don't gouge it out. And, and I think a lot of the things that's going to determine the success of this is if we get it planted early, you know, even this year, it'll start growing up, so it's, it's not going to be like there's pieces of plastic that a plow blade can stick on if it's, if it's mature enough, so it's, the key to that is early, you know, an early installation allowing for grass growth. However, even with that said, and even with the utmost of care, you know, we realize there could be situations where perhaps the, the matting might come up or something like that, so our recommendation on the, on the plan specifies keeping some extra pieces of the matting on, on hand that they could install on an as-needed basis. But it's going to be, is, you know, one of those things we're going to have to just deal with throughout the construction process, but with some care, um, we do believe it's workable, it'll be an acceptable solution.
Is there an estimation on the, the timeline of construction, you know, you're looking at twelve months, fifteen months?
As far as the, the wind, the season?
Uh, yeah, no, it's as far as the overall construction for these additions, still you'll get people in the, back into the back parking lots.
Yeah, I'm, I'm figuring at least a year. It, it might be about a year, it might be more, but I'm, you know, the building part of it, I'm a little, I don't want to speak out of turn there, I'm not as familiar with that, but if, for, for site work, um, you know, it's all going to be go, I don't know how the schedule's going to go, but I, I would plan on a year would be a, probably a good number for planning.
Steve, would that parking area count towards disturbed area for NPDS purposes and whatnot?
That's what they're trying hard to avoid by not, by doing as minimal construction as possible. Uh, ultimately, that's going to be up to, uh, the conservation district to decide.
The, the cheapest thing would be to do a stone parking lot, but that would have, that would have affected our stormwater. And even if we laid it right on top, I don't know if that would count as disturbance or not, so this is, again, it's not a cheap option, but we feel it's the best option to minimize stormwater impacts and still provide the stability needed for the duration of construction.
Um, and what, what is the actual area that you're, you're talking?
Let's see, it's a hundred twenty-four spaces. I can, I'm just going to pull that up real quick. I think it's on the plan. The hundred twenty-four spaces. I don't know, area, I'll, I'll grab an area, I'll just scale it real quick. It'll take me about twenty seconds. Right. Two, two, seven. Three. Over the bracket, four, three, sixteen. One second. Two, two, seven, eight, two, zero. It's a little over five acres, about five and a quarter acres. And it, it, it wouldn't have any disturbance, the only disturbance would be the pin going into the ground, and it, it, once you put it in there, it stays there, it doesn't come up again.
Right. Uh, any thoughts from the other members?
This is John, I don't have any other questions.
This is Alex, I'll defer to Steve and the, uh, conservation district on that.
This, this is Steve, I, I obviously have to look at this particular product, because I did not see that yet. Um, and we'll probably have a discussion with the conservation district, but beyond that, I mean, the only other thing that I could think of is from the township's end, we might want to have a discussion with the solicitor. I don't know that there's any liability from the township's point, if this can't be maintained as nice as it, as it should be, it's a, it's a private parking area provided by the employer for their employees, and I don't know that the township has to be involved in it at all from that, that standpoint.
All right.
This is, this is Timmy, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with it, they, you know, the, uh, conservation district and Steve are okay with it, and, uh, you know, it satisfies the, uh, the need of stabilization, I'm fine with that.
This is Andy, same.
All right, yeah, I would agree with that statement as well. So we'll wait to hear back from what you folks come up with.
Okay. So that takes care of that. Um, the letter B there, comment number four, is just speaking about a, um, an, an agreement for the parking, which Steve had just referred to, and that would basically, in addition to, uh, basically when the res, when the res, I'm sorry, different parking, the reserve parking area, once, it's an agreement that would state that, if and when the reserve parking area, uh, would be constructed, with that would come certain necessary improvements, such as stormwater management improvements, landscaping, and things like that. Uh, uh, well, as well as the afforestation we discussed earlier, so there's, we understand that Fresco would not have an objection to entering into that agreement.
Okay.
Um, I'm just going to move on, stop me if you want to discuss anything else. Number five uh, is regarding our, we did contact Mark Fournier from the Telford Borough Authority, had several discussions with him. Uh, we have not made initial submission to them yet, we're trying to get together some preliminary information on what the sewer demand is. It's not, not a simple calculation, and it's really not expected to be anything significant, but there, we're still trying to pull together some of the base documentation. But, um, we, we will, uh, make that submission, we've done some, a lot of unofficial coordination with Mark. He's kind of aware, but nothing official, we want to get official submission into him, and once we get their approval, uh, we will forward that to the township, but we don't foresee any issues with that. The, um, there will be either a planning module or a waiver, we, we realize we'll have to get that to you as well, that'll come as kind of the, the next car in the line after we make our submission. But, um, we'll follow through with that, again, these are, these are just process items, nothing that we feel is going to be a problem. I'll just mention that we did make substantial improvements to the la, based on Mark, Mark's, uh, feedback, we made substantial improvements from the last revision uh, to include, uh, significant sanitary sewer uh, lines in the back there to, to really not only provide for the current facility, but also for any future expansions, and also to improve the lateral for building four, which is the, the building, the, the lowermost part of the plan, which actually currently runs underneath a couple of the buildings, we're going to reroute that and, and basically do it the right way, so we're, we're kind of scoring on three, three areas there with the sewer, so there's significant infrastructure being proposed with that that, um, that the TBA will, will have to review, obviously, but, uh, I don't want to speak for Mark, I, I won't, I, I thought he was favorable to it, but I, you know, let him review it first before I say anything officially. But that, that's the work in progress, we don't see it to be an issue, it just, we've got a little more work to do there. Uh, an outside agency approval.
Okay.
Number six, uh, regarding stormwater, there was a water quality, number, letter A there. A water quality appendix was inadvertently admitted from the report, we forward that to Steve. I don't expect he has, had, had time to review that yet, um, but if he had any comments, he could, welcome to, obviously he'll, he'll comment on that, but it's- Um, but if you had any comments, you could welcome to, obviously he'll, he'll comment on that, but it's, uh. The, the, the information was forwarded already. Um, and we also understand that there'll be an operation and maintenance agreement and the, uh, Fresco would not object to that.
Okay.
Good. Now, number seven, we have made our submission to the Bucks County Conservation District. We did get a administrative comments back from them. And we're planning to address those by the end of the month at the latest, hopefully sooner and get that back in there. Um. You know, so we're going to, we're going to work through those comments and once we get that approval, we'll, we'll forward that to the township.
Okay.
Uh, number eight. Uh, let's see, the, uh, we're proposing fees in lieu of dedication of recreational land. Uh, we calculated, Steve confirmed a $7,500 fee for that. And Fresco has no issues to provide the, the required fee.
Okay.
Okay. We are also in contact with Joe Roush, the fire marshal regarding the, um, the fire service. Initially, there was some discussion of a fire hydrant. After some back and forth. Uh, he, he was acceptable to us providing a fire department connection on the end of building three. So that's a will comply. We will provide that as part of the, the building design. Or I should say the building contractor will provide that as part of that, their design package. Number 10, uh, the secure, we did prepare a security cost estimate that was submitted. I understand it's still under review. So once we receive any comments from that, we can address that. And, um, you know, had no problem with the security agreement. We'll enter into that agreement as well. At number 11 is really just a few miscellaneous engineering and drafting comments. Um, actually there was very few plant changes that are actually would affect the plans. As a matter of fact, we received our letter on Friday of last week. And we're already, we didn't resubmit the plans, but we're done. We could, we could have submitted them today if we needed to. We can literally submit them tomorrow. So. Really, there's nothing else that, you know, subject to everyone's concurrence, the Steve's review and concurrence. The plans, nothing else that would affect the plans unless a new comment comes up is from this, you know, today's, tonight's discussion. But we've, this is a will comply for everything in number 11. Um, things like the manner drafting thing with removing the waiver requests. We referenced the latest plan. Um, we added a, a note for zero cutoff fixtures on the lighting plan. Uh, we provided, uh, temporary staking for the landscaping. And we're also added construction fencing along the church property, very simple adds to the plan and, um, we'll comply with all those. So really from a plan standpoint, um, we feel we're clean as a whistle. And, um, if the waivers are acceptable, uh, number 12 is just a comment, just saying, um, you know, the right to make more comments. And, uh. And things like that. So I guess with, with that said, we realize, you know, we have the, the TBA approval to still obtain. And we have the Conservation District, the NPDS permit to still obtain. Um, I don't know what your, the pleasure of the planning commission is. Certainly your call, obviously. Um, but we feel that these are, these are not showstoppers. These are outside agency approvals. If it's, if it's agreeable with you, we'd respectfully ask you to, um, to grant a conditional recommendation of approval. And would, would certainly continue, there can be responsive to the township.
Steve, with all the little outstanding things, are, I mean, are we safe to do a conditional preliminary final?
Yes, the little outstanding things aren't going to change any of the layout on the plan or any zoning issues.
Okay. Um, so we do have to, planning commission has to approve the waiver request letter.
One, one comment on that waiver request letter, uh, the one, uh, I guess there's one dated May 12th, which is today. But I picked this packet up over the weekend. Is that just, uh? More oversight or is there? What, what's going on?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I prepared that letter last week. I probably should have dated it the day I did the letter. I was just thinking the date of the meeting was what I should date it, but. It's, um, that's the most current things. We had, we had a little mix up with. A couple of letters. I didn't get all the waivers in, so I did a cleanup letter to make sure they all got in one letter. So that was just a little error on my part, but they're all, the, the May 12th letter has all the waivers. That we discussed today.
Okay, thank you.
And the. What was the item that we had talked about earlier that Steve was? Happy to waive everything?
Steve, was there any concern about the proposed temporary parking? This is Alex.
Uh, my only concern was one, I wanted to see the product to see that it was truly going to be pervious and. The second question was the, the, you know, maintenance of it. So both of those I think are under, you know, take under advisement, but I think the concept is okay. Who's going to be comfortable with the, how they're executing it?
It will, so, yeah, sorry.
Are, are we, are we comfortable to waive that at this point?
To waive?
Oh, no. My bad.
Yeah, you're not waiving anything with respect to the temporary parking.
Correct. I'm sorry.
Um, I mean, technically it's not an ordinance issue. It's just, we, you know, we identified. Through our discussions that they were in need of somewhere to park while construction was ongoing. So that's what they're addressing.
I guess the other thing I'm seeing in the waiver letter is the one about the fencing, which we thought should be. Incorporated in some way, that one basin.
Right. That would, we wouldn't get approval for that particular waiver. We would, we would comply with that one to the ordinance or whatever is worked on.
That was number 10 on the request.
Number 10, yeah. So, I mean, make that as part of the motion that we accept all waivers except number 10. On the, on the waiver request sheet.
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if it's 10 or 11 because 11 also deals with safety fencing.
Okay. I think it's actually both. It's, um. It's, it would be, it would be both. Because it's different, different storm events, but it's, it's still fencing that's required. So it would be 10 and 11.
Right. Same area. Two different criteria, same area, right? Yeah. I mean, would that make sense to? Approve this letter? Uh, rejecting 10 and 11?
This is Alex. I'd be okay with it.
This is Tim. Yeah, I'd be okay with that as well.
All right. So I guess I'd be looking for someone to make that motion.
So the motion, the motion is, this is Tim. So the motion is to accept, uh, the waiver request letter excluding items number 10 and 11?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make said motion.
John, a second. Okay. All in favor?
This is Alex. Hi.
Chris, aye.
Tim, aye.
John, aye.
All right. I think we got it everybody. Uh, so motion carries, um. So I guess at this point. Do we have everything covered? Uh, to. To vote to give them. Uh, preliminary final?
Conditional preliminary filing, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah. I, I, I think we're clear. Steve, you agree with that?
I, this is Steve. Yes, I, I would agree. I don't think anything. That's left on the plan or left to, to clean up and these comments are changing the plan at all that you'd need, would need to see it again.
All right, good. All right. So somebody want to make that motion?
This is Andy. I'll make a motion for conditional preliminary final approval.
This is Alex. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
John, aye.
Alex, aye.
Andy, aye.
Tim, aye.
Chris, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You got it. Congratulations. Uh, good luck. Have a good night. Bye bye. See ya.
Have a good night.
All right. So next on the agenda is old business. Um, I don't think we had any old business. Um. Couple of things to mention in new business. Um, we all were forwarded the East Rock Hill. Comprehensive plan that they wanted us to review. I, uh, I just breezed through their recommendations list, which they pretty much the things formatted. You know, the same as ours. Uh, and having gone through their, uh, recommendation, future recommendations list, I was. I didn't see anything and jumped out. I mean, not say it was good to go. I don't know if anybody else had a chance to review or not.
Chris, I'd agree. I, I took a quick look at it and basically looking at their checklist of recommendations. I mean, they had 13 and. I think half of them were almost identical to what we had and the rest I saw no issue with.
This is Steve. I don't think there's any zoning changes or any other significant changes in that comp plan.
Right.
I looked, this is Tim. I looked at it briefly, but not, I can't make any kind of comments about.
This is John. I, I read through it. I didn't see any issues.
So we all comfortable to say? I'm sorry. Andy, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no comments.
Okay. So are we comfortable to, comfortable enough to tell the supervisors that we looked at it and we saw no issues?
I'd agree. Alex.
Tim, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. John, I agree.
Andy, yes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll mention that, uh, next week in the report. Um, the other new business is the alternate position. Greg, supervisors. Uh, agreed to, uh, to go ahead with the alternate member to the planning commission and. They advertised, uh, that the position was open. Um, so that was advertised after the supervisors meeting and I, I think they need to leave it advertised for at least 30 days. So. At the end of the 30 days. So at our next meeting, we'll probably have, have, uh, a list. We have one, one interested party. And no others so far. So, so if anybody comes up in the next, before the next meeting. And then we can, uh, we can have discussion on that at our next meeting and, and make the recommendation to the supervisors. And that is all I had. How about, uh, do we have a review or, uh? Not the review, the.
Yeah, engineering report.
Engineering report. Thank you.
Hi, Andy. Um, there's nothing too exciting on here, but just a few things to note. Um, you see I put some additional asterisks on some of the deadlines with, with the whole COVID situation. There was a. There was a law passed that extended everybody's time period and, and all these developers were notified. I just haven't worked out what their new dates are. Sooner or later we'll, we'll get the new dates straightened out, but Mary's been on top of, been on top of that. And just for an FYI, we do have. Uh, Snyder resubmitted a plan. I'm not sure what it is. It's several sheets, but I think it's still basically a sketch plan to talk about that length of that cul-de-sac street. We've talked to the fire company. I directed him to talk to the fire company, but I don't, he never talked to me again. So I, I don't know what his. Discussions were with the fire company and exactly what he wants to talk about, but we'll try to figure that out. And also, uh, remember the Wesco property. Uh, that we've been asking what's going on for years. Uh, well, he sold it to a contractor, to a roofing contractor. Uh, and of course they don't like the building layout that he proposed. So. They're submitting a revised plan to modify the building layout on the property.
Who was it? What, what roofing contractor?
You know, I don't, I don't remember the name of, the name of them right now.
Anything else going on?
Uh, lots of stuff going on, but that's it for you. Oh, I guess one other just tidbit too. We have a couple of plans that are coming up to be recorded, like the crats plan. So. Uh. You may get contacted by the office to come by to sign them sometime after we figure out how we're signing plans. Since we're not having in-person meetings. So just in.
I'll bring my own pen.
There you go. All right.
Um, also real quick for Greg and Sherry, I just wanted to let you know, when I picked up my packet, there was a check. In the planning commission mailbox to the township. So I figured it's probably going to be lost there for at least a month if no one goes and looks for it.
Okay. Let me know. Yeah, I saw that too. So. All right. I will tell Linda to grab it tomorrow.
All right. Any other, uh, business we need to discuss? If not, uh, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay. With no public comment, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
This is Andy on that motion.
Alex, I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Uh, thanks, everybody. Uh, see you somewhere sometime.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Night.